Good morning. It's nine o'clock, so we'll start this regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court here in Titus County on the fifth day of April 2024, nine o'clock here at the courthouse. And if y'all all rise, we'll have our prayer and then the prayer.
Dear heaven Father, Lord, I come to you thanking you, Lord, for all you do for us. Lord, I ask you right now just to be with us as we go into our meeting and, Lord, just give us the wisdom that we need to make the decisions that's right for Titus County. Lord, I thank you for all your many blessings. Ask you just to be with us this weekend as things are happening here in Mount Pleasant, and I just ask you just to be with us, be with everyone that is coming in. Lord, just help us now to always do your will. Go with us now and forgive us before we fail you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one on the agenda is the public comments and request for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Have anybody that would like to speak this morning on that? We'll do it a little bit different today. If there's any comments, I'm gonna ask the Commissioners if they've got anything early because we normally do that at the end, and we'll be going in executive session, and I don't know if everybody will be here when we come out of executive session. So Jeff, you have anything you want to say?
No.
We've got Cole Hefner here with us today, our representative. We appreciate you being here. We had a opening, I guess, for the broadband this week out at the Prefort Jimmy and I attended, and Cole was there. So people out in the county, you should be able to start getting your internet. Should be a whole lot better. I've heard lots of good things on it. Don't have it myself, but everybody that I've talked to has been very pleased with it, except for the cable. That's the only ones that we've had a problem, and I think we may have some solutions later on today for that. We've also got a new volunteer firefighter here today with us from Sugar Hill, and we appreciate all the volunteers that we do get, and welcome to our volunteer department. We've got a lot of different people here today with us, the Casa ladies and stuff, and they'll be speaking, but just wanted to kind of go over a few of those things that we do have going. And so we'll move on with the agenda now. Number two, considering possibly approve the minutes from the March 25, 2024, special meeting of the Commissioners' Court.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes?
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve those minutes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hear unanimously. Number three, presentation by Casa of Titus, Kemp, and Morris Counties along with the Winsboro Child Advocacy Center with possible action for Crystal Hosmer. You might want to pull that down just a little bit, and there you go.
There's that.
That's perfect.
Good morning, Judge Cooper, Titus County Commissioners and guests. My name is Crystal Hosmer. I'm the Executive Director of Casa of Titus, Kemp, and Morris Counties. I'm here to speak to you all today. One, to let you know exactly what Casa is and what we do, and also, two, to let y'all know what our volunteers that we train do for the kids that are removed from Titus County. Casa of Titus, Kemp, and Morris Counties is the 73rd Program across the state of Texas. We cover three counties, including Titus County. We work to ensure that all children placed in the foster care system due to abuse and neglect have the safety, stability, nurturing they need to thrive. We recruit and train Casa volunteers, which is members from y'all's community, to advocate for these children as they are going through the foster care system. Not only do these volunteers work along with the children, they work along with the children's families, they will work along with attorneys, they'll work along with their educators, and advocate for them educationally and medically. They also speak up for their best interest. These volunteers go to court, they speak on his behalf of these children, they devote their time. They do not get paid a dime for what they do. A district judge in your county may appoint a specially trained Casa volunteer and an attorney to be the guardian alightum for the children as they're going through the foster care system. Each time a specially trained volunteer is appointed, it saves Titus County taxpayer dollars. One year of Casa advocacy costs less than one month of foster care. Casa of Titus, Kemp, and Morris Counties has existed for 10 years. We approached our 10-year anniversary on October the first of 2023. To kind of give you a breakdown of exactly what a Casa volunteer does, a Casa volunteer goes visit these children wherever they're placed. These children can be placed outside our region, they can be placed outside their county. We have kids that are placed in Houston, San Antonio, we have some that are also sometimes placed out of state. These volunteers travel to go visit these kids. In place of a volunteer, as we do not have enough volunteers to serve all the kids that we serve, a staff member fills those shoes. A Casa volunteer also works directly along with attorney alightum. The attorney alightum is to do what the child wishes. It is Casa's job to do what the child wants, especially if the child's older. Excuse me. The Casa volunteer is to do what the child is best for that child, not what that child wants.
What they want, yes.
Yes. Casa's contribution in Titus County alone for 2023, 762 staff hours were devoted just to children in Titus County. 517 volunteer hours were contributed to children out of Titus County. 4,545 miles was traveled to visit Casa children. With the eclipse coming, we were not able yet to put our blue pinwheels out, but they are coming after the eclipse. You will see the blue pinwheels. What those blue pinwheels represent is each child that Casa served out of all three counties for 2023. This past year, Casa of Titus, Kemp, and Morris Counties served 82 children. Thirty-two of those 82 children were removed out of Titus County. Thirteen of those children's cases were able to be closed. Those are the happy times that we can close these kids' cases and find permanency for them. Four of those children were reunited with their parents. That is our goal from the very beginning. We always hope to ensure that these children can be reunited with their parents and these kids can go home. Two of those children were adopted, and seven of those children were placed in legal guardianship. Out of 100% of the children that were being served in the three counties, 12% of those children were ages five years and younger. 13% of those children were ages six to 11, and seven of those children were ages 12 to 18. We do have children that are still aging out and not finding permanency, and that is a very, very big concern. Thirty-two volunteers served 70 children this past year. Twelve of those children were served by Casa staff. As I've stated, we do not have enough volunteers to serve these kids. It would be amazing if each one of our kids that we serve have a Casa volunteer. That Casa volunteer can definitely devote more time to that child than a staff member does. A Casa volunteer stays with that child or those children. If there's a sibling group, we have volunteers that have had up to six siblings at one time, and they build those relationships with those children. There are times that these volunteers are able to build a better relationship with these children, and these children actually build that connection with these volunteers. Some of these connections continue to last on after that. I would like to open up the floor at this point in time for any questions. I'd be glad to answer any of those, and then also, Judge Kent, if you wouldn't mind doing the proclamation. Also today, I have it printed for you to be able to sign.
That'd be perfect. I just, I don't want to overjump one of them wanting to say something. It's sad that we've got that many children, but we really appreciate your volunteers and your staff. Without y'all, it's even a worse mess, and we appreciate all you do for our children. There's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that y'all do that you don't get a credit for. It's a sad day on children, and when you use that small number, age number, that gets to me, and...
Anything that we can do to help Casa, Titus County is here to do that.
Thank you so much.
You got the proclamation.
I'd just like to say I appreciate everything that Casa does, and all you, all the volunteers and all. It's a good organization, I think.
Thank you. We appreciate everything that y'all do.
Well, a lot of people don't understand that what y'all do for those kids, keep them out of my courtroom as well, and gets them on a right path instead of the wrong path. And sometimes they get on that wrong path and they can't get off, but with volunteers and help like y'all, we're very, very appreciative of that. And if you do have that proclamation, I'd be honored to sign that for you. Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all for being here and all your work.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Thank you. The proclamation that I just signed is for Child Abuse Prevention Month, and that's going to be for April of 2024. Number four, presentation by Mr. Patrick Stacy from KLTV to discuss strategies and opinions for the FCC modification for news coverage, including Texas local channels and Titus County with possible action. Mr. Stacy, I want to welcome you here today. I've had several phone calls. One of the first phone calls I got in January when I was sworn into office was a gentleman telling me that I was the judge and I could get his Dallas Cowboys to Mount Pleasant on TV. And I didn't even know that that was a possibility for me. Started looking into it, made several phone calls. I didn't get that. A lot of great answers. I got a maybe, maybe, maybe. I spoke with Cole Hefner, our representative, and he's been working with us. And then our elections officer that has just took over took the bull by the horns, and I want to say thanks to Cole, and I want thanks to Michelle for having you here today. And the gentleman that called me back in January, I hope that I'm finna make his dreams come true and get our local stations here from Tyler to Louisiana. So with that being said, I turn it over to you, Mr. Patrick.
Yes, sir, Judge. Thank you for this opportunity. Court members, thank you for this opportunity. With your permission, can I pass these out for you guys?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Again, thank you for this opportunity to present today. I'll try to be clear for those in the audience also that will have an interest in this. This is some collateral information that will be perhaps useful for you to take some action, and I hope that's the case, honestly. Representative Hefner, thank you for being here as well, and other members of the community that have reached out over those same years to me, Judge. I've heard about it. Nothing would please me and KLTV more than to be present on, at least starting satellite delivery here and other stations in East Texas. I think it is, while we want to see the Cowboys and other sporting events...
They also want the news as well.
Absolutely. There's news content, there's weather, and you know, we're entering tornado season. There's a matter of public safety as well, and all that encompassed is really the prime mission of television stations, to serve those communities that we exist in, to try to help out and inform, be those first informers in so many ways. So I've got here just a little bit of a primer on some history, and if you'll indulge me, I'll go through that. And again, I want to respect everybody's time and make sure there's time for questions. Counties are assigned designated market areas, and that's a TV FCC term, and those essentially are the market clusters that TV stations and even radio stations serve. And in that designation are the ability for satellite providers, in the case of DirecTV, Dish Network, they're assigned counties as well. And they only get to serve, when it's just a pure assignment, they only get to serve one market, and Titus County is assigned to the Shreveport-Bosier Designated Market area. And it's been that way for years, since I've been here. I've been here 38 years, and we used to see some counties fluctuate back and forth, and it was based on the cumulative viewing to a market. So you take the TV stations from Shreveport, put that amount of viewing together, that share of viewing, and they compared it to these Texas stations. Well, this was done originally back in the '70s, and they would review that every year, and there were three or four TV stations in the Shreveport area, and it was KLTV and then KETK for a while. And while KLTV, I'll show you, probably had the preponderance of viewing, as a cluster of TV stations, the Shreveport stations would win out. And so that's how the county is assigned to the Shreveport area. And this is the same with Panola and Harrison and several other counties. Upsher, Wood, Franklin are assigned to the East Texas market. So those things used to fluctuate, as I said, but it happens less and less. So right now, we are stuck with that. But the FCC recognized that some counties are underserved because here we are in Titus County in Mount Pleasant. We're receiving Shreveport news, Shreveport weather, and a lot of it is not relevant. So the FCC back in 2014 created the stellar bill that gave counties, municipalities, even broadcasters, but they really prefer it to be a citizen-led group, municipalities, county cities, to petition the FCC to allow for what's called orphaned status. And it doesn't remove the Shreveport stations, but it would add the East Texas stations that any petitioning body requests. But you have to make a case for it. And so that's what I've got in here in this packet is perhaps the beginnings of a case for that as it pertains to KLTV and some of the things that we can provide. Now, the FCC also has these five criteria, and you see those, but they're a little ambiguous. This is really an open letter to groups to say, make your case for why your county should be considered an orphan county and given this market modification designation. So you put together the case, and again, I've got some of that information there. Once the FCC petition is sent, or once it's sent to the FCC, and typically it's lawyered up, sent to the FCC with all the collateral information, the FCC has four months, 120 days to review it. They will come back, and I know that Titus County did present a petition several years ago. It was rejected because it looks like a lack of information. Perhaps it wasn't as robust as it could have been. I don't know, was not privy to that, but the FCC will review it. Other counties, and several in Texas, in East Texas, and have been able to be a help meet on some of that, Panola County and Harrison County have achieved this market modification status, and so they receive the East Texas stations by satellite. Once the FCC rules on it, assuming it's in favor, no telling if it is, but if it is in favor, then the satellite carriage and the TV stations have 90 days to work out a deal and begin that service. And typically, I don't believe there's any extra cost to subscribers. Not 100% sure. I'm not in the satellite business, but those customers do begin receiving that. So if that makes sense, I'll pause here, see if there's any questions.
The main question I've got with the two counties, Panola and Harrison, that did get that done, is there any one that we can speak with there? And you may be our advocate that we need to get our information to the FCC. We definitely, I do, I don't know about the other guys, want that channels here for the news and for my Cowboys and the weather.
Yes, sir.
And I think it's very big for us. So you tell us where we can start that. Cole's 100% on board with us, and that's the reason he's here today, and he'll help us any way we can if we need letters from Austin. You tell us what we need to do.
Yes, sir. And I'm happy to help, again, be a resource in that. The FCC, I think, prefers that a municipality be the lead point on it. As far as Panola and Harrison County, it was those judges, county judges, that were my point of contact, had some exchange on that, and I believe both of them, at least one of them, has since retired.
Right.
So I don't know on that. So, and I can also tell you Congressman Moran is very interested in this. I had the opportunity to go to Washington DC, and this was his main point that he brought up, so he's heard from others as well, and he's in support of it.
In your opinion, and I know it's just your opinion because you're not the one that's calling the balls and strikes on it, if we do get this information to them, what type of chance do you think that we've got 50/50 of them giving us these channels?
Yep. If you do a Google search on market modification FCC, you will see the results of a lot of counties that have achieved that status. You'd have to dive in to see exactly what that timeline is. This has been in place for not quite 10 years. I would say it's better than 50/50.
Great.
The spirit of it originally was to address border counties that are, you know, right up against a state line.
Right.
But as you look into this, it has migrated into other counties that are being underserved. I hate to, I don't want to say that because we have a station in Shreveport, but...
Not necessarily underserved, but the information that we get from them, normally that weather's already come through here and gone there.
Yeah, by the time they start covering it, it's...
It's passed.
Yeah, damage is done. So, so yes, sir. So I'm happy to help out. It would be one of those things that I'm happy to meet with you, any other members that you would designate, and help do what we can to put something together. I'll refer to some of the collateral that's in here as a sample of what I provided to other counties.
Right.
And this could be part of the case for making that petition. You can see that this is our coverage area. If you have an antenna, you've got a pretty good chance. Sometimes you have to elevate a little bit of receiving KLTV, perhaps the other stations as well. Antenna use has returned, and it's a pretty good portion of the market, but the satellite providers are still the dominant way of getting that satellite, followed immediately by cable. Two satellite providers, typically one cable service. So this is a way to do that, to get additional coverage that's going to be pretty reliable. I also did some graphs here on the second page. This is the cluster of audience information, cluster of counties that we have access to. I don't have access to Titus County on where viewing is going now, but we clustered together Kemp, Franklin, and Upsher, and you can see these are household ratings. One rating is 1% of that geography, of that three-county area. And I'll say typically, if you look at the late news, which is a high point, 14.3 rating, that means 14.3% of the households in that three-county cluster are watching KLTV. Typically, there's only about 50% of homes in East Texas at 10:00 that are actually watching somewhere, and so we've got roughly, what is it? It's going to be about 30% of the market viewing. So I would dare say that we're number one or number two in this three-county area that surrounds Titus County. The next graph is very similar. It just shows the amount of viewing that goes, is split between the East Texas stations. So it takes KLTV versus KETK versus KYTX and KFXK, and shows, again, KLTVs, we're fortunate to be very dominant on that. The last two pages, I believe, are some of the most important things that could be included, and a few petition to have other stations involved in this. It's actually the last three pages. These are news coverage stories, pieces of content. They were either online or on air during a newscast that pertain to Titus County and Mount Pleasant in 2023, and it's a pretty robust list. And I think that, again, is part of the point to make to the FCC, is that the stations are already covering our area. A lot of our people can't see this. It's still newsworthy. It's still in East Texas, and so this information, I think, will help be compelling in making that case. So again, I'll pause right there and see if there are any questions additional.
Does anybody in the audience that have a question for them, we've got a pretty good trigger. He's talking about out there in that Argo area. They got a different zip code. We still claim them in Titus County, just not in 7544. Yeah. We've got a good crowd here, and if y'all don't mind, I'm just going to ask y'all, how many of y'all would like to have those channels, be able to get those Tyler channels? Say it's pretty much 100% here. We do have Representative Hefner here today, so we've got him on the spot. Is there anything that we need from him while we've got him here? Is a letter going to help from Senator?
Yes, sir. I believe any collateral like that, a letter from representatives, would absolutely help. Our state senator as well would be good, and Congressman Moran, I believe that we petition all those. I have a feeling all of them are going to be willing to do that.
I spoke with Mr. Moran. We had a meeting last week, and he mentioned that as well. And I've spoke with Cole, and he's 100%. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we move forward with this and get it going as quick as possible. I'm also in that motion, I want to put Michelle as your contact here, and I didn't ask her that. I'm just nominating her and making that motion, so. Got a second by Commissioner Parksman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hear unanimously, and hopefully by football season, I'm gonna make a man's dream come true, and we're gonna get local weather and news here in Titus County.
Sounds great.
We appreciate your time and coming up today.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Number five, presentation by Jerry Ward on the county's plan for total solar eclipse, Titus County Emergent Management Coordinator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There's not been a lot of changes since the last time I spoke on this. The weather is going to be one of the biggest factors for Monday. We have a chance of widespread rain chances that afternoon. The timing still remains uncertain on Monday, which could take effect on the ability to watch the eclipse. Of course, we live in Texas, that can change anytime. The timing of the eclipse from Monday, April 8, is 1:45 to 1:49 is supposed to be the total darkness.
What time did you say again on that, Jerry?
Sir?
The time again?
Is 1:45 to 1:49 is what they're predicting for Mount Pleasant. Is a 3 minute and 57 seconds. Cloud cover is 40% that day, partially viewing maybe, just have to wait and see on the timing. As far as emergency management, we'll be out in the county to assist for traffic control, EMS calls, and other calls. Talked to State Park, they're still booked and no cancellations. They're estimating 2,000 at the Bob Sandler State Park. Yesterday, Titus County, I mean, excuse me, TriLakes, we carry my handheld radio out there where they can communicate back and forth with us. So we will have people out in that area too. I met with some of the VFDs. They're gonna have people off that can respond if needed to. TRMC, we have four ambulances, one to be staged on the south side of town. All DPS are on duty. The Sheriff's Office have extra staff and if needed, or will have, I guess. Tidham District, Disaster District 5, ELC, will go to a Level 2 on Monday. It's had a Level 3 now at 8:00 AM Monday morning to go to a Level 2, and this is just for readiness in case something does happen. We're still expecting the same, a lot of traffic, people with the rain coming in that evening. It should be out that morning, so we'll just go hope for the best and move on. Anything?
How many people would you say totally were expected here in Titus County?
Bob Sandler State Park, 2,000.
I'm talking about overall?
Well, it's changed so much. When it first come out, it was like 50, 60,000, and then it come down to 25, 30,000, and I heard just a day or two ago, it was like 15,000 to 20,000. So, and then with the cloud cover coming in, talked to two of the motels. They haven't had no cancellations yet there, so there's still a lot of people coming into the area.
On those glasses, Jerry, and for my ignorance as well, I was listening, on the side of those glasses, it's supposed to have a 9,000 number or something like that for them to be protective glasses. Is that correct?
That's what I heard.
And for those people that think just putting your sunglasses on and looking at that, that's not an option. It would still hurt your eyes with that, so.
Well, the meteorologists right now, they're... Well, the meteorologists right now, they're saying that there could be, you know, gaps in the clouds where it's possible it could see. They're still recommending the glasses.
Right.
They're cheap, you can buy them about anywhere, so we'll just have to wait till Monday morning to see what happens.
Like I said, they were saying this morning that there, there are some knockoffs on those, and Greg is here with us today, Lloyd. Do, do you mind speaking on the, on the part about the, the other part where we're going to have a ELC, a remote ELC, so that we can contact them as, as far as that? My, my knowledge on that is not near, near well enough for me to speak on it, but if you don't mind, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, so what we're setting up is a virtual ELC, so we anticipate quite a bit of cell traffic and things, and if something happens, of course, that'll increase, which could crowd the cell towers to the point where you just can't get out, or you're in a queue and it takes a while. So we've established a virtual ELC. We have a secure code system that you can get on a landline and get a call out, so we'll be outside the total eclipse area. Shouldn't be crowded, shouldn't have cell traffic issues where we're, we're located. So that way, you'll have an ability to get a message out if you were to need something, and then we'll take care of requesting the resource for us, the virtual ELC. Yeah, we'll do briefings and, and just intel gathering. We'll keep monitor of the crowd, you know, is it, is it all coming in on Friday night, Saturday? Do they not come in until Sunday night? Nobody really knows for sure what's going to happen, so we'll monitor that. We'll do weather reports and briefings throughout the time to try to stay, like Jerry mentioned, the cloud cover. I mean, that's a big, and last-minute adjustments of large volumes of people. If it's crowded in Dallas, cloudy in Dallas and not here, they may shift real close over here, so we'll keep, keep you guys posted of that, and then request intelligence from you guys, you know, what's happening. You know, 200 campers show up in somebody's haymeadow or something, just, just so we can kind of help law enforcement and emergency services have a little bit of a situational awareness of what's going on.
And from my understanding, you've talked with some commissioners, and they might even be contacting you to get that information out. Jerry's got some people that, that'll be out in the county as well, so that we're covered all over the county.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The, the ELC manager is going to reach out to the commissioners after the meeting. He'll make assignments. He's basically just be responsible for their precinct, and, and the sort of contact person for that precinct area as to, you know, you have a lot of influx of people? Do you have traffic issues, are people all parking on the road? What needs do you have? And we'll see if we can't help coordinate county resources and get you some help, and that'll go all the way through to the end of the day Monday, because obviously when the eclipse is over and all those people decide to, we, we can have issues there, too.
Okay.
So that'll be in place. He'll call after, after this meeting and get all that set up.
Thank you. Appreciate your information on that.
You bet.
Didn't feel adequate to speak on it. Thank you, Jerry. Number six, considering possibly approve a loan from the general fund to precinct three for the purpose of a new Tiger Bingle boom mower with a John Deere 61110M with a Tiger RT50D through the board, by board, at a cost of $208,963.90, with $50,000 being applied from the precinct three budget, making the balance due of $158,963.90. And that's going to be in Commissioner Applewhite's.
Yeah, it's a, it's a vital, a vital piece of equipment, you know, it's just like a maintainer, backhoe, you know, side cutter. Of course, you can see the, the prices are going up every, every time you turn around, but that's just everywhere. But this would be a, really a good piece of equipment that'll keep our roads clean and stuff, and the ones, you know, that we had were, they just wore out, and I, I sold mine a couple of years ago, and it just, it costs too much to, you know, put a boom on a tractor, and, you know, it's best just go ahead and have it all set up. It'll last 10 years, if you know, take care of it.
And, and you've already got this? It is secured at this price, and you do have it located, so we're not, we're not hunting for one at this price. We've got one, so.
Yeah, he's, Mr. Mannderwood, he's here today with, with the company.
I make a motion to approve the loan.
We got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve that loan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number seven, considering possibly accept the appointment of Michelle Wharton as elections administrator on April the 1st, 2024, as a matter of record. We've also got Mr. Leonard Rockwall here today, and Mr. Rockwall, I don't have a hat on, but I want to take my hat off and tip it to you. You stepped up for Titus County when we, when we got left empty-handed, and have done an amazing job. Ms. Michelle cannot say enough good things about you. Our last election went real, real smoothly, and I just want to say, from bottom of my heart, I appreciate you when I reached out to you to, to ask if you'd step in. You stood right up for Titus County, and, and you've always been that man to me. I've known him, went to school with his daughter, so I've looked up to Mr. Rockwall for a long, long time, and come out of retirement and did an amazing job, and I appreciate you immensely. I appreciate all you've done in helping get Ms. Michelle on her feet and getting her up and going, and you're, you may be stepping down, but you're not going, you're still a phone call away from us, and we appreciate you.
I just say, I think the commissioner made a good choice, and Michelle, and she and Kelly, they're working well together. I think the office is going to be, going to be just fine. I think you have a, all good start, and I'm saying there won't be any problems at all when you do it, and be a better kid, but...
We certainly appreciate you, Mr. Rockwall.
Thank you, Mr. Rockwall.
Ms. Michelle, we appreciate you. I know it's been a little bit hectic, getting your, getting your feet wet, and a new job and a, and a new spot, but we appreciate you. We also appreciate you stepping up and, and helping us try to get this KLTV here. Not part of your job, but as a concerned citizen, we appreciate that, and we've got a big election coming up, we've got the city elections coming up, and then the, the big November election, and so we feel like we're in good hands, and like I said, Mr. Rockwall is always a phone call away, and is a friend of Titus County, and we appreciate him for all he does.
Thank you very much, you're welcome.
You bet.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the appointment of Michelle.
Okay, matter of record, we, we have to have a second on?
Second.
Second by Judge Parker, by Mr. Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number eight, considering possibly approve the changes to the Titus County policy for the application of employment. Mr. Applewhite.
I'm just asking if the commissioner would add to our current policy. It's not going to change anything except giving us the option of adding news, media, marketing. Right now, it says that when we advertise for a new opening, that it has to be in the newspaper for two consecutive times within seven days, and it also states that's being on the bulk board of the Tox County Board of House. I'm just adding that you either let us do the newspaper, either or, digital media marketing. That way, we can kind of balance a little bit here in Tox County, and that way that, because we have our newspaper on the run once a week anyway, and we see it's going to give us a, a different meaning.
I think it's very important to be able to put it on the web, and who knows how much longer we'll have a paper printing here, so, and we've run into that problem with our probates and stuff, so you can't get it in there twice in, in seven days. It takes you two weeks to do what you used to be able to do in a week, so I definitely feel like we need to move that direction.
I make a motion to approve this change.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve the change so that we can have application online.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number nine, considering possibly determining certain equipment items to the surplus salvage and approve for sale in precincts one, three, and four, and the sheriff's department. Jeff, do you want to list what you've got, or?
Yeah, I have four pieces of equipment that I want to sell. I have two patch trucks. One of them is a Chevrolet 3500 and an F350 Ford. I have a new Holland side boom tractor I want to sell, and then one of my older backhoes, it's a new Holland backhoe as well, so that'd be four pieces of equipment for us.
Okay. Precinct three?
I've got a 16-foot trailer, and I got a 24, 25-foot gooseneck, and I've got a, a John Deere tractor with a, with a Rhino shredder, and I've got a chipper, wood chipper, and let's see, what else? Let's see. But I've got a list, I've got about eight items on it. I'll get it all turned.
Mr. Parker?
I've got, well, it's either two or four. Dana's talking about buying a couple of my trucks, the dump, my dump trucks, when I get my new one, they're, they are in Talco now to have the beds put on, and supposedly they were supposed to have went in to have the beds put on this week sometime, but I don't know if they've gone in yet or not. But I've got, the four items that I've got listed is 97, 350, it's one of our old patch trucks. I'm going to probably pull a bed off of it, so it'll probably be just a cabin chassis. And then those two dump trucks, they're F750s, 2005 models, and then I've got a 2005 LB75 backhoe that I'm on.
So, so almost all of your equipment, and I'm just 20 some odd years old?
Yeah.
So you're running into problems, you're going to run into problems fixing them, getting parts, and things of that nature, and?
Yeah, the old patch trucks and all, we're having, I had one went down the other day, and they hunted and hunted and hunted, and finally got the stuff to put it back together, but for now, so.
And hopefully that we can get, I do want to put these all on there, but we need to get us a plan so that we're, we're changing that equipment out, hopefully a little more regularly, so.
I've got a, I'm looking right now for a, for another truck to, to put that bed on that I'll take off of this one. I'll use the same bed, but I just need a truck.
Truck put in.
And I do have a, a patch truck, too, like that, a small patch truck.
Elect Bragg, Sheriff Bragg, would, would, do you know what y'all got on there?
We've got three old patrol units, and, and, and some of the old dodges.
So the Durangos?
Yeah, Durangos, and some of the old, uh...
Chargers.
Or chargers.
Okay. Did, did you take all the, as far as the equipment? I don't know what you call your equipment, radios or whatever, lights and that, things off of them, or?
Yes, sir. Everybody's been served all that, say, all the bars, just served right out.
Before you said?
Maybe it would go around and add up that way, so it's just, I'm making sure that maybe I can come over and say.
Okay. Is there, I don't know if we'll be able to use those lights, but is there a market at all for, for reselling of those back to?
Some of it is. We trust we signed, we've been getting, of course, we're moving over to the Chevrolet models.
Right.
That will fit, the Dodge Durango, the Charger can fit, and the Chevrolet. Blue or radio, some of the light bars, some of the setup, but, but, we have to get a little bit of equipment.
So, well, I guess what I'm asking is, if we do have, excuse me, if some of that equipment doesn't fit and stuff like that, can we still put it in this?
Yes, we have, as we've auctioned off some light bars, push bars, things of those types, there's other smaller counties that are smaller than us, I could go out and get our apples to spare you.
Great. I got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to put these on.
I'll second it.
I got a second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carry unanimously. One thing that I would like to say is, one of those elect Sheriff Bragg and Sheriff Ingram let us do, have one of their Durangos, and we're using that for our EMC, and we do appreciate that, Mr. Bragg, so much. Number 10, approve oral and written reports of the county officials.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman that we approve those county official records.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 11, considering possibly accept the treasurer's report as a matter of record.
Make a motion to approve it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve that as matter of record.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I don't carry unanimously. Number 12, approve the budget amendments. Ms. Melissa, or Ms. Nana?
Okay, I could like to respectfully address the loan for precinct three. We wanted to put something in the record. Your repayment plan is four payments or three?
It's going to be for four. I'm, I'm going to pay five, but I'm, it's going to be, it's going to be four after four years.
Okay. I just wanted that to be in, should have had that in there. Okay, and then the...
We appreciate you keeping it straight.
Just wanted to keep our little eye on it.
So we keep the book straight. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
That's all right.
And the, we're going to have a budget amendment for the local, the LATC fund. We did the end report for them and obligated the $100,000 to the purchase of equipment for the county fire department. We will be doing a budget amendment for that $100,000 to book that in place, and we already have purchase orders against that. We also are budgeting $28,000 for the grant writer. The grant writer contract was approved in court for the $4,000 a month fee, and that will mean seven fees for the year at $28,000. We did move that from contingency.
Make a motion to approve budgets.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to approve the budget amendments.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number 13, sign the pay orders and approve our payments.
Make a motion to repair bills.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Number 14, on our agenda, we're going to recess into executive session to deliberate about real property in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Section 551.072, and personal matters in accordance with Texas Governmental Code, Section 5510745, in regard to the county fire department. And the time that we're going to do this is at 9:46. We'll go into the executive session, and we'll get over. No other name.
Sir? I need you to sign it.
Is that called? Is that called?
Did you get warm?
Love it.
Went in there, got in front of your heater. Okay, well, it's 10:59, and we will reconvene, the meeting, and we did have a meeting, and be no action taken there, so number 15 will be the closing comments by the commissioners. I don't, I guess, not as easy.
Be careful this weekend.
Is your boat?
I ain't got anything.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?